Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Rope call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. I am a May approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak during the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have Resolutions D through G. No need for an executive session, so the motion could include adjournment if so desired. What's the will?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Madam Chair.
Okay, come forward.
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Somebody left their glasses up here. I was doing some homework last night, looking at the-
Is this about the resolutions, Larry?
Resolution D.
D?
It says resolutions D.
Okay.
On the truth.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was doing some homework on that last night. And I just want to point out that for citizens like me that are not real knowledgeable, it would appear in the explanations or attachments to each of those items that they're... There are some people getting things free. You know, I might be wrong. I'm just saying that's the way it appears to the unknowledgeable person, the inexperienced person. And that there are some real estate agencies involved in a couple of those. And that brings up, once again, you know, maybe some further explanations on how these things are given away, or not given away, or donated, or declared tax exempt, or not declared tax exempt. But it doesn't look like the average citizen gets in on these things. But I did notice a couple of real estate agencies were. And I'd just like to have more debate or explanation of the process on these things and the definitions by our commissioners. Thank you.
Anyone else?
For which one?
We're on Board of Equalization resolutions.
Thank you.
Please vote. Oh, do you want to say something, Mike?
Sure. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessors Office. In response to the most recent comments, all of these are parcels that, for whatever reason, were either exempt or were what we call centrally assessed. So, for example, by state law, property owned by the municipal land bank is automatically exempt from tax. So when they sell property to a private citizen for a private use, it becomes taxable and we have to put a value on it. Similarly, for things like properties owned by the Union Pacific, those are state assessed and not locally assessed. And so it's part of... The state has a formula for how they assess the value of railroad property, for example. But when they sell property, it comes back onto the local tax rolls, and so we have to come up with a value for it, and they'll be billed in December. So, for example, you have land bank, you have the VFW Post had some exempt property, you had the State of Nebraska, they had some exempt property as governmentally owned, and you had Union Pacific. So, we had, I think Commissioner Borgeson sent an email, or somebody sent an email some time back about how railroad property is assessed. And so if you look at property owned by the Union Pacific, for example, on our website, if it's operating property that they're using, it shows zero locally assessed value because it's part of a larger state assessment process. And so this is one of those things where I can understand from the outside looking in, somebody might say, gee, how come this break is given?
Thank you.
Well, in the case of exemptions, it's statutory, and in the case of state assessed, it's being assessed but in a different manner. So I thought I would clear that up. Thank you. Yes.
Those on Zoom, could you please mute? And please vote. I'm sorry. Oh.
Yes.
Sorry, couldn't see your light.
Thanks for this clarification, Mr. Roy. Because I, you know, I look at that as, sometimes it's difficult.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, your mic's not on.
We've been struggling with-
Probably because we're voting. We're in the middle of voting, that's why.
Oh, I see.
All stop and see if that works out.
Is that better?
Worked. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. So, thanks for this, because I was looking at this on the agenda and struggling to determine what exactly we're doing with all of these properties sold by the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Yes. By state law, once the land bank gets them, they become exempt. And then when they turn around and sell them, then they come back onto the tax rolls. And in fact, due to a recent change in state statute, they actually get a piece of the tax revenue that's generated from the property when it comes back on the tax rolls.
So, what's happening here in resolutions under D, certified assessment corrections reflecting omitted or undervalued property, and approval of corrections to the tax rolls, is these formerly Omaha Municipal Land Bank properties are now under a private owner-
Yes.
-coming back on the tax rolls.
Yes.
So Mr. Darrell Taylor, who's on a number of these, is now becoming property owner of these properties.
That's, that's right. And you'll adopt, if you adopt this value today, then he'll get billed for each of those properties on that basis in December.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
Okay, no further questions or comments, and I'll give Dan a second here to get the vote back up.
We'll need, for those who did vote, I'll just need you to vote again, so we're starting right now.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Rope call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. We're going to just move one item up, and that is our presentation, and it is an update on our November 2022 election by our Douglas County Election Commissioner, Brian Cruz. Good morning.
There you go. Okay, and then I just push the arrow, right? Okay. Good morning, and thank you-
Good morning.
-for having me. Brian Cruz, Douglas County Election Commissioner. So, you've probably seen or heard, if you've been on digital media, social media, radio, TV, there's an election two weeks from today. It's hard not to know what's going on. So I appreciate, as always, the support of the Board, and we're happy to be here to give you an update, this information. I have my deputy with me, Chris Carruthers. And so we are getting ready for the election. So with that, I think most people know, but we're at 12220 West Center Road in the Bel Air Plaza, 122nd and West Center. Bus service does come to us. We've got about 200 parking spaces, and this has been a great facility for us. So our website is votedouglescounty.com, and you can find all kinds of information there. One of the best pieces currently, or right now, on this website is right up there in the left-hand corner where it says, "Find your voting information." If you put your home address in there, and then your zip code, and click on search, it will take you to a sample ballot of exactly what you are voting on. It will also show you where your polling place is, it'll give you a picture of it, and it'll tell you where you're going inside of the building, like the parish center, the gym hall, the main hall, something of that nature. So currently, as of October 3rd, we have 358,398 registered voters. You can see the breakdown there, Democratic, Republican, nonpartisan, Libertarian, and Legal Marijuana now. There are four parties currently acknowledged in the state of Nebraska and nonpartisans, and I, all of these parties have at least one candidate on the ballot. So you're likely to see a candidate at someplace on your ballot from each of these individuals. So, in Douglas County, we will have a two-page ballot. The first page, voters are pretty much used to our format. We don't change them. The first page will be candidates, front and back, most likely, and the second page will be judges and special issues. So there is one constitutional amendment regarding revenue for airports. There are two statewide initiatives. Ballot Initiative 432 is essentially voter ID, and 433 is essentially minimum wage. If you reside in the city of Omaha, you'll have some charter amendments, and if you reside in the school district of Bennington, you will have a bond issue to vote on. So just a few statistics from Douglas County. We have 231 precincts, 212 polling places. So those numbers remain the same pretty much every election, and even after redistricting, they stayed right about that 230, 215 number. We do maintenance every year to keep these pretty steady, so we don't have any wild swings for voters. 720 different ballot faces. So what that actually means is there's 720 different ballots that are printed and distributed to our polling places. Because where you live, you probably don't, may not vote on the same person as OPPD, NRD, School Board. And so all of those have to be put on the correct ballot and then sent to the polling place. Every ballot has a ballot number on it, like this one is 169, and that ballot represents where you live and what you vote on. Number of election workers takes approximately 2,000 election workers to make this election happen. There are 149 different candidates on the ballots this time around, 90 different offices, 17 judges, nine certified issues, and then our office, programs, and prints, our own ballots in-house at our office, out at 122nd and West Center. All other counties in Nebraska and the majority of jurisdictions have an outside vendor do it. We do it in-house. So we will actually print 600,000 actual pieces of paper this election for voting. And in doing that, we have estimated that we have saved the taxpayers of Douglas County millions of dollars over the last 10 years by printing in-house. So there's three ways that you can vote. You can vote early voting, by mail, you can vote in person at our office, which is currently going on, or you can vote at your polling place on Election Day. Polls are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you have an early... Let's see, oop, I skipped a slide. Sorry about that. Early voting statistics for this election. So there's no doubt that early voting is becoming more popular. Pre-pandemic, I think the highest we got was 36% early voting in 2018 general. In May of 2020, the primary, which you have to remember was about six to eight weeks right after COVID happened, it was 88% early voted. In the presidential general, it was 63% voted early. In May of this year, it was about 63% voted early. This election, I'm expecting about 50% early voting, the vast majority being by mail, some in person, and 50% polling place. So it'll be about 50/50. One important thing for voters to remember is if you've got these early voting ballots at home, you have to sign it in order for it to count. So be sure and sign right here at the bottom, and then these have to be returned by 8:00 p.m. on election evening. Drop boxes count as being returned, so either returned to our office or a drop box by 8:00 p.m. Postmarks do not count, and the post office recommends, as do we, that you do not put these in the U.S. mail after the 1st of November. So one week before election, to allow proper time to get to our office and into our possession. So as of close of business yesterday, we had 96,000 requests. We have mailed 92,000 ballots. We've had about 1,400 people come to our office in person. So total, we've handed out 93,415 ballots. You'll see a little discrepancy there from the request. That's just because of duplicates. Sometimes folks request more than one ballot. You only need to request one ballot. You can request as many times as you want, but we have to process those, but you're only going to get one ballot. So ballots returned, as of yesterday, was 42,043, which is 45%, and we have 13 drop boxes around the county. Our voters have embraced our drop boxes, and we have had 70% of our ballots returned via one of our drop boxes around the county. They look like this. They're the most direct way to be returned to us. We have 13 physical locations, and then at our office, we have one in the parking lot that's a drive-up, and two inside the lobby. Voters prefer to actually come to our office and put those in a drop box in our office. So, as I mentioned, we have 2,000 election workers. You know, about 1,400 of those will actually work on Election Day. And this year, we have poll workers from 18 to 88. So it really does take all of us across the county. We appreciate all of our election workers. They're invaluable, and we couldn't do it without them. And as you can see, we have a vast variety of voters in Douglas County who assist us. So the other 600 workers are opening board, where we actually open the envelopes ahead of time, machine operators that run our machines, sealing and storage, so after they've been counted, they have to be sealed and stored properly in the event of a recount. Telephone operators, we'll have about 35 telephone operators on Election Day. And then we always have some extra board workers. You know, folks get sick on Election Day, things of that nature, so they'll call in and not be able to report. It's minimal. It's very minimal, but we do have about 100 extra board workers on standby, you might say. We used, I think last time, about 30 of those, so it's not large. It never prevents the polling place from opening because there's six people there. If someone doesn't show up, they can continue to conduct business. It's just we get somebody there to replace them as quickly as we can. So our election night release schedule, what everybody wants to know, 8:00 p.m. is the early voting results. So at 8:00 o'clock, we will release the first results, and that will be votes turned in through Monday, essentially. 8:45 p.m. is Election Day voting from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. 9:45 is the 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. first results. 10:45 is the second round of that. And when we get to the nighttime results, the 9:45 and the 10:45, there is an interactive map on our website where you can find these results, and it will tell you which precincts are in the 9:45 numbers, the 10:45 numbers, and things of that nature. The first two are all the precincts from the county, so that's why we don't have a map for those. But the last two, we do have that interactive map. You know, there's no real rhyme or reason. We, we count the votes as they come into our office. So it stands to reason that polling places closer to our office will get counted first. That's a generality. But we just count them as they come in, and that's why we have that map, so candidates, campaigns, and the public and the news media can see where we're reporting from. So early voting ballots, we always count some ballots after Election Day. So early voting ballots turned in on Election Day are checked in on Wednesday, so we have to check signatures on all of those. They're opened on Thursday and counted on Friday. And the reason we do that is because when we're picking up on Election Day and election night at 8:00, all of our resources are used for Election Day. All of our computers use to check these in, have telephone operators at them, our counting machines are being used for Election Day, and so that's why we do that. And it's the sheer volume. You know, we've had 11,000, 12,000 ballots turned in on Election Day. So it just takes time, it takes manpower to do it correctly, to check all the signatures and check them in on Wednesday, open them Thursday, count them Friday. Provisional ballots. So if a voter needs to vote a provisional ballot at their polling place, we have a certain amount of time by state law. So those all have to be done by the second Friday following Election Day at 5:00 p.m., and then we count those on the Monday. So that would be November 18th for provisionals, and then count on the 21st. Now, our number of provisionals has been shrinking, which is a good thing, voter education. So if, if we get all of those processed and we're ready to count before that Monday, we will do that. I don't automatically hold up till Monday just because the law says, but it just, quite frankly, depends on our workload. If you're asked to use a provisional ballot, please do it. It takes a little bit of extra time, but we've got an 83% acceptance rate on those provisional ballots. So if you cast a provisional ballot, there's a pretty darn good chance that it will be counted in the end. And this right here is the reason elections are always unofficial on Election Night. They're never official until we do our official canvas. Our official canvas will be Wednesday, November 23rd, right before the election. In the event, we need to do a recount. The state sets that date. That will be Wednesday, December 7th at 9:00 a.m., if there's any recounts that are ordered. So just some important dates. This Friday is probably the most important date besides Election Day at 6:00 p.m. You have this week to come to our office and register in person if you want to register to vote for this election, and it's the last day to request a ballot be mailed to you. We are having additional hours as a convenience to voters. We're normally open 8:30 to 5:00. We understand that's not always convenient for all voters. So we will be open the next two Tuesdays and Thursdays until 6:00 p.m., and then the next two Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then, of course, Tuesday, November 8th is Election Day. So I'd just like to kind of end with saying, voters in Douglas County should be assured and reassured that elections are safe, they're secure. We have 100% confidence in our people, our procedures, our products, and when voters cast their vote, their voice is heard. And if voters have any questions when they're voting early or voting at the polling place, please, please call our office, 444-VOTE, before you cast your ballot. We can help you before you mail in your ballot or deposit it in that drop box or the box at the polling location. But once you put it in there, it's a secret ballot. It's gone. We can't help you. So with that, I just thank everybody for their support. Thank our election workers and the Board for their support. And I think we're getting ready. We will definitely be ready two weeks from today.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And thank you for this. I don't see that we have a hard copy. If you could provide us with hard copies-
Oh, Dan, yeah, I think Dan's handing them out right now.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot to pass them out when you started.
No, no, no problem.
Thanks. This is, this is great information. The early voting slash mail-in voting. Can those early voting and mail-ins be dropped in the drop box?
Yes, yes. And 70% of them are, and we always encourage voters to do that because that is the most direct way to return it to our office, is via one of our drop boxes. They're emptied every day. We have two people of different parties that go and empty those every morning. They're out doing it now. And then the one at our office is by far our biggest usage, so we, we empty that multiple days, multiple times a day. And we are emptying the drop boxes on Saturdays and Sundays as well.
Great. These drop box locations, the 13 drop box locations-
Yes.
-that are on this map, it's very difficult to read these, but that's okay. I was just wondering if folks wanted to look up exact locations, like you have on here, where would they look?
Sure. So if you go to our website, votedouglescounty.com, and just click on the envelope there that says, "Vote early by mail," there that says Vote Early by Mail, and there's a map right there, and it'll give the locations of them. So you just click right there. It's the easiest way. They can always call our office, too, but this really is the easiest way.
Okay. What if you could give us an estimate? I don't expect you to have the exact number at your beck and call. Is the cost of this election in Douglas County?
Oh, you know, for this, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna guess somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five million. That's strictly a guess. Presidential generals, obviously, are most expensive. I'm gonna guess one point two to one point five million
Okay.
will be my guess. I can look back historically, and I can email you, too, but that's my best guess.
That's fair. I mean, it's money well spent.
Well, thank you.
Keep our democracy functioning.
We try.
And, you know, that's, in the scheme of what we spend on government in Douglas County, relatively modest sum. So, thanks for controlling costs and providing a great service.
Thank you.
Every election cycle, at some point, we normally hear from you, the voter turnout estimate.
Yep.
Do you have a handle on that quite yet?
Sure. You know, in gubernatorial generals, we're usually fifty-five percent, give or take, a little less, a little more. You know, I'm thinking between fifty-five and sixty percent. We'll see how early voting shapes up these next few days and into the weeks. But I'm thinking fifty-five to sixty percent, we've got some good candidates and some issues on the ballot that I think will drive voters out.
Very good. And I was gratified to hear you say that the election is safe and secure, and you have a hundred percent confidence in the security of, you know, counting votes. In the 2020 election cycle, the just previous election cycle, was there any fraud detected at all in the Douglas County election process? Any fraud?
We did not find any. You know, it's, I don't ever like to use absolutes, but we're confident that it's minimal at best. We have lots of checks and balances in place. We check signatures. We do an extensive canvas or audit process after the fact. We do tests before we use the machines, and then we do hand counts on certain precincts and races that the Secretary of State instructs us to do randomly. You know, there's numerous other things. But to answer your question, no, not that we have found.
And Mr. Cruz, I think you're one of the longest-serving, if not the longest-serving election commissioner we've had. Is that right?
I think Mr. Phipps was actually there ten years, and I've been there seven.
Okay.
So...
During your tenure as election commissioner, and it goes back a number of election cycles, has there ever been any fraud?
Thirty seconds.
You know, we, again, I don't like to use absolutes. I don't know if I want to use the word fraud. We had an irregularity from the time to time. When we see that, we turn it over to the Douglas County Sheriff. They're an investigative unit. And they have talked to a couple individuals, but it's not been found to be fraudulent.
Very good. Safe and secure. We can have a high level bordering on a hundred percent confidence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thanks for this.
Of course.
Just to jump a little bit on what Commissioner Kavanaugh was talking about. You mentioned that if there's, that there are counts by hand to verify what the machines are doing. Have you, do you know if there's ever been a discrepancy found?
Not since I've been there. So the Secretary of State's office will actually, you know, they'll pull randomly, they might say precinct eight-thirty-one, the governor's race. And we go get those ballots and hand count those. And they give us several of those races to do. So we hand count those after the fact. We, it's pretty archaic and basic. We use a tally sheet, and we sit there and make tally marks to go back and make sure that what was reported from the machines is what equals on literally our piece of paper. And yeah, we've never had a problem.
Just mentioning that, because as you know, in certain states, they're talking about doing things by hand to verify the validity of the machines that we have.
You're right. You know, I would say, on the occasions that we have found mistakes in our office, and we're not perfect, those have been human error. I mean, those have been human error, honestly. Machines do what you tell them to do.
Right.
And, you know, our machines are never connected to each other, to the internet. We have two people on every machine. We have cameras in the rooms. We have windows in the rooms, double authentication to get in there. There's just numerous levels of security.
And as far as the drop boxes, what is there to keep those secure, and also to make sure that the cutoff for that date is followed?
Sure. So the drop boxes, in the 2020 election, between the primary and the general, we actually replaced, we added some drop boxes, and then we replaced all of our old drop boxes with these drop boxes. Our old ones were more like a post op, a blue post office box that had the big slot in there. These, and they were metal. And quite frankly, with our weather, they were deteriorating. They were melting away, essentially. These are stainless steel. These require two keys to open. Two people of differing parties go and collect them, put them in a collection bag each day. Then there's a seal that's put on that, and then they bring them back to the office. The slot is much smaller. You can only, it's only about this big. There's one right outside of here, if you haven't seen them. But you could only get maybe one or two pieces of paper in there at the most. We do empty them every day. And then if you recall, the board did allocate us funds for cameras. And so we're working on that now. We have some of those cameras up and running. They're working on them this week. The majority of them will be done and up and running by the end of the week. There was, it's the world we live in, some supply chain issues and things of that nature. But we've always had drop boxes within view of cameras, just not necessarily the counties. Now we will have the county ones. You know, we're not sitting there looking at those every day. We don't have the time, the energy. That's not the purpose of them. The purpose is if something were to happen, we could go back, review the footage, and then make a plan to help voters. We've never had a problem with drop boxes. We don't anticipate one. And the last thing I would say is, like up at Seventy-second and Ames, I know Mary Ann was there the day when we added that one, if they're in a parking lot, we put concrete bollards around them to, you know, reinforce them from snowplows or whatever may happen.
Great. One more thing, too, is
Sure.
I just want to talk about how important this process is. About two years ago, when I was running, actually, three of us on this board were, Mike won, and then Roger kind of won.
[laughing]
But Dad beat him by three votes.
That's right.
So I'm sure that day. But the process was long. I will say that the results were not known on Election Night. I do believe it was
One minute.
provisional balloting that did it. And Roger and I, that night, were experiencing opposite emotions, I'm sure, when we found out about my dad and him. But I will say that Dad, at that point, also just would call Roger his co-commissioner after that. So he, Dad always said, "I heard the voters. I heard them, and I respect that." And so he always tried to welcome Roger in spite of the fact that they were opponents. And so I think Roger's been a great addition to this board, just as an aside, as former opponents.
Well, thank you. Yeah, sometimes the process is long, but, you know, we'll never sacrifice speed for accuracy.
That's all.
All right. No other lights? Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Okay.
We have one.
Oh, do I just?
Yeah.
Step aside.
Okay.
Good morning. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I've had a few brief conversations with Brian. And as I kind of tipped him off that when I did get up to talk about this, it's not going to be about him personally. It's about the process. However, in this presentation, there were a lot of things not mentioned. I grew up in a period of time since nineteen forty-three believing in my government and believing in my officials. However, in the last couple of decades, my trust in government has been damaged considerably. And most recently, since this last election, my faith in my government severely damaged. And I don't think Omaha, Nebraska is any different. Douglas County is no different. I know there are ways that people finagled the voting in Chicago, the gangsters. I don't say that about Omaha. But when you want to manipulate the elections, to manipulate your politicians, there are lots of ways to do it. And they've done it. And it probably still goes on today. And we used to have a Tom Dennison that did it. And what I'm telling you now is there are a lot of things not on here about election security that's not discussed. And there are no citizens here, maybe four or five non-connected citizens. And we already know the basic stuff that was on that slide presentation. But what people don't know is what's not there, because our elected officials have refused. They have refused Mr. Robert Borr, questioning the whole process. They refuse to answer. They refuse to submit documents that he's asked for. We have a resident here in Nebraska, Mr. Richard Rexstasney, I'm sorry. I've told them I were going to mention their name, by the way. He's written a book about it. He studied all the states in the last election and a couple of elections before that. And he's got all the statistics to prove that there are voting irregularities when you look at the statistics and the actual data. Our own Secretary of State refuses to talk about it, refuses to answer, refuses to reply and submit documents that have been asked for. How's that for government? How's that for transparency? Robert Borr is running for a campaign to write in as governor. That's not covered in this presentation, that possibility of having a write-in vote and manual counts. No explanation of how secure our boxes are. Movie, Two Thousand Mules. And I've been for, fought four or five presentations on election security and how the election was, in fact, quote, stolen. People drive up and throw a bunch of ballots in the drop ball, ballot box, binwound box, ballot box, harvesting box. Mark Zuckerbock is behind some of that with his nonprofit money, paying people on the street, maybe to take a bunch of ballots over there and slip them in the ballot when Blount is not watching. Maybe there's cameras on our boxes. Maybe there isn't. And every one of the election officials and poll workers are connected, one way or another, to a party. We all know that you have to do what your party wants you to do and the way they want you to do it, or you won't be in the party. That's, founding fathers called that factions, I believe. And they warned us about that. If I was working directly under Brian, I have to do it his way. Brian's working for somebody
One minute.
that maybe has ideas on how to do it. He has to do it their way, whoever appointed him electively. But we don't often get a say in it. And when we do try, we get refused. That's why you have a write-in candidate this year, maybe another one, two or three, possibly. Maybe Brian could answer about write-in votes and how the citizens should do that, so that when they do go to the, they're not confused by it. And real quickly, the city council issue on the ballot, they were going to try to slip in there the last two items on the city charter, items that deal with critical race theory. If that shows up somehow on that ballot, then they should be held responsible because it is unconstitutional. Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone on this presentation?
Actually, I have a comment.
As a citizen?
As a citizen.
Yep.
Colby Barrett, three zero one five, South Forty-four Street. I just wanted to say that I have been an election poll worker for over a decade. And one of the things that I have been very impressed with is the level of security. There are very specific rules on how literally everything is done. And when we used to go to in-person training sessions, the biggest rule was, don't go making stuff up. There is a rule. There is a process. There is a procedure for everything. One of the other things I've really enjoyed is that they do bring us together with people of all parties or no party, and it has never been an issue. It's like when we become poll workers, we kind of leave all of that at the door. All of that becomes irrelevant. And the process, making sure everyone has access to the process, is literally our biggest responsibility and our biggest goal. And it's something I'm very proud to participate in every time Douglas County has an election. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I don't...
Hold on. Commissioner Friend, sorry. There we go. All right.
Go ahead.
It's probably better if I'm muted. [laughing] I used to, I used to be accused of debating myself. I'm not really doing, I'm not really doing that under these circumstances. Every time this comes up every two years. I've known Brian for a while, and I knew, I knew the previous election commissioner, and I've known him, I think the one even before Brian Phipps. These kind of questions are not new. So let me make it simple. There are still scholars and people who question whether Thomas Jefferson actually defeated John Adams. John Adams didn't question it for very long. He wasn't very happy. But there are still people in this world that believe Thomas Jefferson did not beat John Adams. And there were discrepancies, and there were all kinds of problems. There was vote buying. There was all type of purchasing going on. John Adams wasn't a very pleasant guy, and Thomas Jefferson evidently was. And Thomas Jefferson became a president. Do we, there are people that don't think that Abraham Lincoln actually won his first election. There are scholars that'll go, look, did this really happen? Vote buying, discrepancies, stuffing, all kinds of, all kinds of issues. Oh, and by the way, do we really believe that John Kennedy defeated Richard Nixon in nineteen sixty? Because there are some, okay, well, I heard, I heard one, yes. There are some in this country that don't believe that John Kennedy actually won that election. As a matter of fact, they think that Joe Kennedy won it for him in Cook County. Now, do you really think we're inventing anything new here? You really think that's, I mean, is it possible? We've been around, this country's been around for over two hundred years. You really think that this is new? It's not. The question is, what do people like Brian, what do people like Colby, what do people do when they see these things actually occur? What do they do in Illinois? What do they do in Michigan? What do they do in Pennsylvania? What do they do in Nebraska? When you see these discrepancies, when you see potential problems, what are your answers to those questions? I'm confident, when I run into people who actually have the answers to the questions, they actually deal with it. Okay? One of them was, one of them was, and I'll, and then I digress, cameras on these boxes. We got people dumping a bunch of stuff by a box, and then we have people hand putting them actually, one by one, into a box. I'd like to see a tape of that actually happening. Short of that, I don't have any proof that it did. Brian came out, I don't know, eight months ago, and said, you know, we don't know that there's any fraud, but we want to make sure there isn't. Okay? Look, I digress. You get my point? I've been listening to this for twenty years. Did Al Gore beat George Bush? Yes? No? Ask the people in Florida. I'm done ranting. You know what? There's no win here. There's no win. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. Any other questions or comments? And I just have to say that this, no.
One minute.
No. This, this really frustrates the heck out of me that I think there are very, very good people across this country, and I work with a lot of them. Commissioner Rogers has worked with a lot of them, that their sole job is, like Brian's job, is to make sure that their communities, their counties' elections are safe and sound. This whole... This whole politics by fear, by conspiracy, by whatever you want to call it, has got to stop. There are good people working for the good of the American people, and we have to get back to that. We have to stop this nonsense. I appreciate Brian coming today to show us how our elections are run, the safety and security of our elections. And I really do, I mean, every day, I hope that we can get back to be in the kind of country that we were before all this nonsense. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Brian, for coming. We'll move back to the beginning where there is Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, Items A through L. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Most likely.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend, and Commissioner Boyle, did you still want A taken separately? Okay. So with that, it is the consent minus A. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please.
Go. It really does make me sad. It really does.
That's why I went over.
It's just sad.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go back to consent agenda, Item A, the approved agreement between the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and the Millard Public School District to renew the school resource officer contract at Horizon High School. This is budgeted, and it was held over from Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. And Commissioner Boyle?
So thanks for pulling that up. First and foremost, I want to say that I've done a lot of homework on school resources, school resource officers over the past week, just to get a better understanding of what they do. And they've got some great resources, like the National Association of SROs. They have a website that has a really detailed brochure to talk about what the, what the goals are, really what SROs are all about. And it talks about, how there's a triad where they want to be involved in, in safety, of course, of the students, of being informal counselors or mentors, and also really of providing students and educators with, with different roles of law enforcement in general. So found out that just 20% of schools have SROs, but 70% of high schools do, and that doesn't count private schools, so the number's probably smaller than that. Also read some information that the state statute actually has some, something to say about it. Really, it has to do with training SROs more than, more than anything, but not really who's paying for it. So I see the value of SROs. My question really is, aside from it being the way we've always done things, why does Douglas County pay for SROs? And I understand that, that, that they're employed for, maybe from the data that, that Deputy Hudson gave us, about 180 out of the, out of 180 days of the year, out of 260 weekdays in the year, so about 70, 75% of it. So I just have questions about where, why payment is expected, aside from it being tradition? From, why does the county, why is the county expected to pay for this, aside from it being tradition?
Good morning, Commissioners. Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I also brought with me Lieutenant Tim Owens, who's in charge of our SRO program. So to understand your question, you want to know why is the Sheriff's Department paying for, well, paying for half the SRO salary?
Yes, why did, aside from the, it being that we've always done it that way? Aside from being, we've always done it that way? Why, why does the Sheriff's Department, or why does Douglas County pay, pay for that, instead of the Omaha, the public schools that they're, they're providing the services for?
That's a very good question. So this is predates my time here on the Sheriff's Office. We've always had it where it's always been 50% of the pay is done by the county and the other 50% by the school district. From the sheriff's standpoint, we see it as a need, a service that we're providing to the community. As we can see across the nation with all the different school shootings, things of that nature, having a school resource officer in the school is something that the residents of Douglas County have grown to expect.
Yes, so just as, that's not my question, I agree with that. So my question really is, why, why doesn't the school pay for it instead of Douglas County?
That's a very good question. We never ask them to pay for 100% of the, of the deputy's salary. If that is something, the will of the board, we can always go back and ask them if all the school districts is willing to pay for 100% of a deputy's salary, we can ask that.
Yeah, and I'm not asking that either. It's not 100%. They're there for most of the year, 75% of the year. So it's mostly just, how can we make that more equitable? So to the, to the county, I'm thinking that, to be honest. Again, I'm very pro SRO, so don't misconstrue what I'm saying here at all. It's mostly, has to do with the fact that we are under a budget crunch, and if you really try to provide services that are directly impacting people, I mean, if they're hiring you to do that, I mean, possibly they should be the ones to pay for it. I mean, I work at a hospital, it'd be great to have Douglas County pay for half of a, half of a, an officer to come and protect, protect us at hospitals, too. So, so shootings are happening all over. The SROs I know provide a really great, unique responsibility with the kids, and like I said, I'm very impressed with a lot of, a lot of the things they do. At the same time, it's the, the funding mechanism when we're on a budget crunch as a county, and I know it's all about public safety. I'm not questioning the public safety part. I'm just questioning who's footing the bill here.
If you look at the actual funding of the SRO, we get paid for a topped-out deputy, topped-out deputy's salary. And we have to do that because we never know who's going to be selected for an SRO position. It could be a two-year deputy or a three-year deputy, but we're getting paid for a senior deputy's salary. So if you really look at the funding mechanism, Douglas County actually works out better because not only are we getting a topped-out SRO, but when the SRO is not in the school, Douglas County's actually utilizing that SRO. So actually, we are, we are better, come out better than the school district.
I'd like to see that broken down further. So like I said, I'm just looking for, to have just numbers thrown out here. All it says, all it's asking for is, whereas Millard Public Schools will compensate, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is an annual rate of $60,005.12 for the first year, and it goes on to the others. And then it dives into a little bit of detail further, but it really, when you really look into the document, it's not so specific. So my point of view is just coming at as, trying to be a, a good commissioner and, and watching the purse strings of the taxpayer, and at the same time, shifting expenses to those folks who really are gaining the advantage, has nothing to do with the, the quality of the SRO that they're getting. It really has to do with finances. So if I could get nuts and bolts on how much it's costing down, like, I mean, these numbers are down to the penny. If you can give me that on, on what, what those costs are and what we're paying for, I think that would probably help me make a decision on this.
Yep, not a problem. And the other thing, too, is, is the way we do our funding mechanism is different than the City of Omaha. City of Omaha do it hour for hour, so if the SRO is not in the school, the City of Omaha's not getting paid for it. Where again, ours is 50% of the time, regardless of the SRO's there or not.
So why would the SRO not be in the school?
Summer break, winter break, Christmas break, all those breaks, we get paid for it, where the City of Omaha, they do not. So again, our funding mechanism is really beneficial to the county.
We pay for 50%, though. So if it were free, I mean, you could make it like 70, 20, 70, 30 or something. So it's just, it's really just like, I need more information about the finances.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Boyle brings up some interesting points, Chief, but, but, well, not but, what I was going to add to that is, if you do crunch those numbers, and I, and I, and I think that those numbers are out there. So in other words, if a, we have different staffing issues than OPD. I guess I'm not, I don't know where I'm going with this, but hopefully I'll end up somewhere. We have different staffing issues than the Omaha Police Department, okay? They have a larger, they have a larger force, and then what type of officer is the Omaha Police Department actually putting into a school? Are they, is it the same? So when you take a resource officer out of a school, you can put them back out on patrol.
Correct.
What happens if, if the Omaha, the one assigned in Omaha is done with the school year, where do they go? What's, what's typical?
My understanding is the majority of the Omaha Police School Resource Officers are part-time retired officers.
Okay.
Okay, Douglas County doesn't have a part-time retired deputy.
Okay, that's, that's probably pretty important, and I'm not trying to put words in Commissioner Boyle's mouth, I wouldn't do that. That's pretty important, because what you're talking about is when you have that downtime in the summer, the deputy goes back out, comes down here, goes out in the field.
Correct.
Does whatever they can do, and Millard is still paying half of that salary.
Correct.
Okay. I know you got those, I mean, I, I know we know how, we know how much a deputy's getting paid.
Correct.
Based on their class. We know how much Millard is paying. My guess would be that we're, we're winning because we have to go back and renegotiate with Millard, or Bennington, or whoever else, a new, you know, a new contract. We, we have to tell them, oh, by the way, you're paying 100% now. I mean, because she's right, we've got, we've got issues, but we just want to make sure we're getting the best deal and the best bang for the buck, right, Chief?
Right.
So what you're saying is, you can't compare, it's apples to oranges. You can't compare an officer that's in an Omaha Public School system, school, and one that's sitting, and a deputy that's sitting out in Millard, not necessarily because they have different certifications, but they're being, I mean, there could be retired officers in, at Omaha North, right?
Correct.
None of those out in Millard, none of those in Bennington? Okay.
No. And for us, we have 10 SROs. If we were to fill those with part-time, if we had it, first of all, we have to see legally from Teresa if we can do it or not, but if we, let's say we could, we would need 20 retired deputies because they can only work 20 hours. We have trouble finding deputies, retired deputies do certain positions around our department right now. So to try to find 20 of them to fill SRO positions, that's going to be impossible.
Okay, I could keep going, but I will not. Thank you, Chief.
Yep. And again, our, our funding system, the way we're doing it, is beneficial to Douglas County.
Commissioner Morgan?
First, Sheriff, I want to thank you for following up on that incident on the Keystone Trail and the emails I sent yesterday concerning the incident. Thank you. How many deputies would we be, have open positions for right now, approximately?
How many open positions do we have right now?
Yes.
It's going to be six open positions because of the Justice Center, that the county's already approved. So we're right now doing background checks, we're having, we have five hire letters out right now, we're finishing up the background check on one more, then that will be our six for the new Justice Center. So we have six openings.
Okay. And I think normally, when we've had open positions and applicants, I think we've had more than 100 usually apply, and I think now the number might be, when I met with the OPE, I want to say 20, 25 applicants rather than the hundreds that we had before. Is that accurate, what I'm saying?
That is very accurate. When I first came on in 1994, 95, there was over 600 applications for five positions. The test before this one, we had 75 people sign up to take the test, 24 showed up, and 12 passed the test. So we're hoping now with the new contract that the board's going to vote on today, that we can now start putting that information out there about our pay, and we can go back to getting the cream of the crop when it comes to individuals applying to be deputies. Back when I came on, there was that desire of wanting to be a law enforcement officer, but today, it's, it's something I want to do. I was a plumber yesterday, today I want to be a law enforcement officer. So we're hoping to get back and get the cream of the crop again.
It's just an amazing phenomenon.
It is.
Of the number of open positions in all parts of our economy as far as jobs, which is something that, you know, I like the board to be aware of because we face that issue, whether it's a 911 or a correction facility where there's totally a safety, secure issue and so on. So I thank you for your comments and appreciate it, and your work.
Thank you.
And all of the team at the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you very much.
And just so I'm not accused of letting you run over, the clock was running from your time, so I set my alarm, so you still had time. So I didn't let you speak past your time limit.
Then I'll use that bank more.
Commissioner Boyle.
I think, I think just to get to the, to get to the crux of the issue here, like I said, this is really about, I would like to be provided a cost analysis of what the number of days SROs are working for the, the schools, and the number of days that they're working for the county. And if that can be broken down, we can figure out really who's, who's quote, getting the better end of the deal, and whether it's a smart, smart thing to approve. So, so for that reason, to be honest, I'm, I can't approve this today until I have that cost analysis. So I'm good.
Okay.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I appreciate this question because it's, it's about financing. I want to comment that the school districts are allowed to receive all possible revenue because of the TIF financing structure. You have council members who pass the TIF, pass TIF projects, which deny financing to the school district immediately. You know how the TIF works, right? So I think that, that is something to do with this. The school districts are then trying to figure out how to bring in revenue, so they depend on foundations and things like that. So I don't know if you're, you're considering that on your financing, but I would imagine that if the school districts were able to receive all of the money that they can get, they would have revenue for resource officers. Thank you.
Thank.
That the TIF financing structure doesn't allow school districts to receive all the revenues in, when the TIF projects approved, that money doesn't come in.
Okay, thank you, Luis. Anyone else wishing to, Commissioner Friend?
The way she said that. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do think, I do, I do think it's important to categorize this as to when, Chief, when was this contract up? How, this school isn't going to be without a resource officer if we delay this, right?
No, it, the contract is already up. We already have, we already have a SRO in the school right now.
The SRO's in the school?
Correct.
If, if, I guess I'm asking for your assurance, nothing's going to hap, I mean, I, I want to, Commissioner Boyle makes an interesting point, and I think, I think we can probably crunch those numbers, right, Chief?
Correct.
Okay, so if we do that, can we, can we delay that? I mean, where, how do you feel about that? To get the information that's appropriate to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, or would you rather say, hey, you guys, well, wait a minute, I know what you'd rather have happen, tell me if it's going to be a disadvantage if we delay this another week, I guess?
I guess my question is, if there's a possibility that the board will vote to deny this contract, then, okay, what about a delay? But we have nine other contracts in nine other schools. So if we're talking about doing away with the SROs, then let's go ahead and talk about it now, that way I can get with Teresa, and then we can exercise the 90-day clause where we can withdraw from the SRO process. If we're not talking about getting rid of the SROs, then why not just go ahead and vote on it now so that I can still provide the information? All, only thing we're going to do is kick this can down the road, when eventually we're going to have the same vote with the same answer.
Okay. Okay. And Chief, so my final question, and I think, I think I get it, but my final thing is, all the contracts with all the schools are on different timeframes, correct?
Correct.
That's the way I've understood it.
The majority of them are.
So, if we, if we analyze this, and we start making decisions based on the amount that a school, or the county is going to pay, then we're going to have to go through this nine or 10 more ti, how many, how many resource officers?
10.
10. We're going to have to go through this nine more times throughout different periods, and we can rubber stamp it, because we're going to know, you know, what that looks like. But, if we approve this, and then we decide, we want to, we get that information, and we decide we want to change the mindset, and we want to change the percentages, we can do that, too.
Okay. No, I understand that. Correct.
Can we?
We can, so, but then, we're talking about, so let's say the board says, well, we would like for the Millard School District to pay 60% of the deputy salaries, or 70% of the deputy salaries. That has to be redone by Teresa, then go back to Millard's legal, and go back and forth.
Thank you, Chief.
No problem. Thank you.
And not to put words in Commissioner Boyle's mouth, but I just want to make sure, because the comment was made, is that nowhere was it stated that this board wanted to get rid of SROs. Never was that stated. What was stated was, we wanted to look at the funding process of how we're doing this, and whether or not that could potentially be changed. So, I just want to make that clear, because I could see that being the headline, and that was nowhere in the conversation that we've had with Commissioner Boyle questioning this.
It's all about the funding source, and make sure Douglas County is getting fairly paid for that deputy in the school.
Well, just whether or not the pay structure is appropriate, or that we agree with that pay structure moving forward.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, with that, did we want to lay it over for a week? Is that what I heard?
Financial information in a week.
Can you get the financial information to us in a week?
That is, yes, that's possible.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, I think what would, one other thing, if you may not be able to get it in a week, but I would like to know specifically what they do in the off time of the school.
Oh, yeah, I can see that now, but I'll include it in the document, because they're reassigned to patrol, they're resigned to our traffic unit. We have a lot of things that goes on in summertime, like triathlons and different specialty events, so they're reassigned to those events, and they work those events, if the school doesn't have summer school. If they have summer school, then they stay at the school for summer school.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Do we have a motion to lay over for one week? Is there a second motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion to lay over passes six to one. Commissioner Friend voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Next, we'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 5115 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Regarding the rules, I thought if you opened up the consent agenda that you were supposed to ask, if there were comments from the citizens, I can't comment when you didn't ask, but there are, so I'm going to extend some of that in general, in my comments again now. I would like my government to stop using critical race theory language in their resolutions and their debates. You can ask us for money out of our billfolds and our pocketbooks for various programs, but please don't use critical race theory terms, racism. Shake your head, it's right there in plain writing, Mr. Rogers. You and I disagree on that every week.
Oh, Larry, keep going.
It is there, you are using it. I'm asking you to change the language, or don't approve the money for the program. I will not fund things dealing with racism, okay? That's a thing of the past, it's outlawed, it's against the Constitution, and your resolutions are dealing with that. I was going to talk about those, but I can't now, but they're right on the agenda.
Thank you.
Your citizens, I also know by rules that you can allow a citizen to speak longer than five minutes. This is not a presentation. Your presentation rules are different than a city. With presentations, the opponents only get one say, but the proponents get to come back again. I didn't, I asked for you to let me have one minute earlier, and you denied me. Citizens like being denied when they petition their government. But I do want to thank you for fixing the sound system, although it's maybe a little bit too loud at times there. I noticed last week, sitting there, I could hear the speakers back there, but I couldn't hear the speakers over here. I bring that up every week, and it never got fixed until I finally approached down with it again. It'd be interesting to see if I have the same problem in the afternoon that I usually have in the afternoon. I don't usually have it here. But, Maureen was a little hard to hear, the rest of the, I didn't have a problem with. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our public hearing section. We have item A, Worker B LLC applicant, a rezoning from ag to rural residential.
Yeah, I've got that one.
This is address of 21260 Bennington Road, and with us today is Kent Holm, who will go through the public hearing information, and then the board, after I close the, public hearing may take action if they so desire.
There we go. Okay. Come on. Behave. There you go.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Today, we've got two items for you, and they are connected, and obviously, there's a little bit of a Harry Potter theme going here, with the name of the subdivision. So, to start with, we're looking at a rezoning, and assuming that, that particular rezoning is approved, then you would move to the subdivision application. Pulling up a slide of the county, and you can see the location. Here is in the north-northwestern part, just west of Bennington. This is what the actual property looks like. There is an access for, over here, which is the main access, and there's also another access down here on 216th Street. This is the one that is being, is going to be used. The zoning here is just changing from ag to RR1, which is consistent with the properties just to the south. And you have copies of the plats showing what we're doing right there. At this point, I also have Doug Dreesen here, he is representing the applicant, the property owner, if you have any questions there. But, the first, first application is for the rezoning from ag to RR, and assuming that that is approved, then we would move on to the second application.
And this went through the planning board, and their...
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, it did go through the planning board, their September 21st meeting, and recommended approval from both.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments during this public hearing? Those for or against the item?
Douglas Dreesen, 10836 Old Mill Road. I recognize a few faces up there, and hopefully, this is a little less controversial than what I've been watching so far. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board on rezoning? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the Worker B LLC applicant preliminary and final plat for the proposed lots one and two of outlots A and B of the subdivision. Again, same address, same applicant. Kent?
Nothing more to add. Again, we're here to answer any questions you may have. This is just the preliminary and final plat for the subdivision.
And the planning board approved it for recommend?
Yes, yes, same, same, recommended for approval.
Okay, great. Any proponents or opponents wishing to speak during this public hearing? All right. I'm out close to public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to committees. Nothing other than the budget report under finance, the weekly personnel report from civil service, no legislative items at this time. We do not have need for an executive session today, so is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Okay, thanks.
Recording stopped.
Motion passes seven to zero, we're adjourned at 10:21 a.m.
Thank you.